I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts. Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow. And Councillor Pishaner.
Here, thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you're attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please raise your hand in use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chamber and then anyone who has raised a virtual hand. And I'm going to acknowledge that Councillor Pitts has joined us and Councillor Woodrow is excused for the evening. Neil, how many folks do we have joining online?
Approximately fifteen attendees online and thirty-five-ish in the room.
Great, first item, please.
First item, Mayor's Springfield upbeat, item number one is Mayor's recognition National Forest Products Week proclamation.
All right. I do have a proclamation for National Forest Products Week that I'll go ahead and read. Whereas the city of Springfield is adjacent to thousands of acres of sustainably managed working forests, which provide renewable resources and raw materials to twenty-eight critical value-added primary wood product manufacturers located in Lane County. Whereas forest product manufacturers are fifty times more prevalent in Springfield and Eugene than the average US city. Whereas Lane County's land base is eighty-five percent forested and the second largest forest producer of timber in the state. Whereas actively managed Oregon working forests reduce the risk of wildfires and provide community benefits like high paying jobs, recreational opportunities, and environmental benefits. And whereas forest sector jobs in Lane County pay on average twenty-nine percent more than the average wage in Oregon. Whereas the city is proud to recognize forest product manufacturers as priority employers and to be at the forefront of supporting these employers as they continue to provide skilled and living wage jobs for the Springfield community members. And whereas the week beginning of the third Sunday in October is recognized as National Forest Products Week. I Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of Springfield, proclaim the week beginning that third Sunday in October to be Forest Products Week and ask the citizens of Springfield to utilize this week as an opportunity to recognize the value and importance of our Oregon working forests and the wood products manufacturers, careers in products which are vital to our local economy and valued way of life, and encourage other businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize a similar week. So we've got a couple of folks here from the wood products industry. I know we've got Sierra Pacific here and if you guys want to come up, I'll join you. And we're going to get a picture taken and I'll hand out copies of these resolutions. I know we have Roseburg Forest Products here as well. I don't know if we have any, I didn't see Roseborough here. Is any other, are any other wood products folks here? All right. We'll get them copies. Can't leave my trash around City Hall. And we'll get copies to the other forest and wood products folks that were trying to come tonight. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. All right, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councillor Pitts.
Aye.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley. Councillor Stare.
Aye.
Councillor Woodrow. And Councillor Pishaner.
Aye.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is a fiscal year twenty-three supplemental budget, one and appropriations transfer. This is resolution number two, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General, street, special revenue, transient room tax, community development, building code, fire, local option levy, lease, local option levy, bond sinking, development assessment, and capital development projects, regional wastewater capital, street capital, sanitary sewer operations, regional wastewater, ambulance, storm drainage operations, Booth Kelly, regional fiber consortium, insurance, vehicle and equipment, SDC administration, and authorizing the transfer of appropriations within the general fund from the city manager's office operating expense to interfund transfer expense. Neil Obringers here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first supplemental budget of FY twenty-three. It's our largest supplemental typically, and that's because we include beginning cash carryover from the prior year as well as our beginning cash adjustments along with those carryforwards. Though most of the items included here are routine in nature, but staff have highlighted in the CBM those items which may be of interest to the council. And so there's a number of them, so I won't go into detail, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have on the CBM or any of the items.
Are there any questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have any cards for this item. Is there anybody online wishing to speak to this?
Mayor, it appears we have no one for this item.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
And I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number two.
Second. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Councillor Pitts.
Aye.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Stare.
Aye.
Councillor Woodrow. And Councillor Pishaner.
Aye.
Motion carries five yeses, zero noes, one absent. Next item, please.
Your second public hearing is illicit discharge detection and elimination. That's the IDDE municipal code update. This is ordinance number three, an ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code Sections four point three seven zero and four point three seven two relating to illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is a first reading and Matt Stoudt is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to request the council hold the public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to amend our municipal code related to illicit discharge and elimination. So as you know, after a long and arduous process, Oregon DQ issued an updated phase two stormwater permit to Springfield that became effective June one, two thousand twenty-one. That's going to require council to update our non-our municipal code, but also our development code for a variety of topics. The first area that we brought before you tonight is illicit discharge and elimination, detection and elimination. So all the updates are going to need to be completed prior to February of two thousand twenty-four, which will be corresponding with the end of our permit cycle. I would note that most of the requirements of the updated permit, we're already meeting those, we're already doing those, they're captured in our municipal code. And that's given to the maturity of our stormwater program. So said in a different way, we haven't identified any substantive changes resulting from our updated permit in this section. There are, however, several non-substantial changes that we've identified that better align with the Environmental Protection Agency's illicit discharge model code and the revised permit. These are also going to help clarify code requirements for the general public. Attachment two in your packet shows the proposed changes with legislative commentary provided by city attorney's office. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have cards for this item. Is there anybody raising their hand to talk to this item?
Here's, we have no one for this item, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And there is no action requested for the evening since it's a first reading only. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
All right, we've got a couple of cards from folks in the room, so. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call folks up and then you'll get three minutes. Can you please state your name for the record and where you are located in the city? Derek Smith.
Name's Derek Smith. Currently residing at twenty-four thirty, thirty-fifth Street, Springfield. And I'm just outside the city by a couple houses technically. Have some concerns to do with the pond that's located next to Ambleside subdivision there between thirty-first roughly and thirty-fifth off of V Street. The pond is dried up. And there was quite a bit of vegetation that was decaying in the empty pond here over the last month or two. And also I have some concerns over the maintenance of the stormwater and stuff, especially in the wintertime that occurs up toward the source of that pond, which would be near the Springfield School District bus garage and maintenance administration buildings there off of Forty-second Street over to the, I guess you'd call it the on-ramp that goes onto the westbound freeway entrance there. There's been some new construction over there in that particular area and stuff. And I'm kind of wondering if that's affected what's going on. I've been living in the neighborhood over there since February of eighty-one, and this is the first time that I've seen that particular pond and the creek that feeds through there dry up like it has this year. And I'm concerned with kind of the environment as well as some health concerns with the, you know, when the introduction of the rains come and stuff on both insects and the, you know, the, I guess you'd call it debris that's going to be washed downstream and stuff. I just wanted to bring that to your folks' attention to find out, you know, if anybody's managing this or who's responsible for the upkeep of that and so on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donald Snyder.
Yeah, hello everybody. My name is Donald Schindler. I live at two four four three thirty-fifth Street. And I've lived there for twenty-seven years. I'm Derek Snapper. I'm here to ask about the loss of our duck pond as well on V Street. When you make a right onto V Street, it's almost the first thing you see when you pull into our neighborhood. And it was always just a point of incredible beauty fenced off with a white fence. Not a small pond, actually, actually quite large and a very, very beautiful area for waterfall. And we've had all kinds of geese, the geese come there. Every sort of animal would be there for over the past years. And I never could, never ever would have thought that it would drop and become a big mud hole and I swore that it is. I'm not sure exactly what led to the loss of this water after so many decades. And maybe some people have some more insight into that. But if there was something that's possible to do to bring it back, it would be, it would be wonderful. It's a little bit sad because this duck pond, it joins the waterway that's near a small bridge there. And some of the ducks and the animals that used to frequent the pond and enjoyed it so much, they're trying to crowd into a spot that's not any bigger than what you have right here. So it's, it's, it's a sad, a sad thing that's happened there. And it has taken from our neighborhood, like I say, a point of beauty. And when people walk in the evening, take walks, it's a joyful thing because a lot of times they end up at the duck pond. And so now we've got to look at it. And we do have some health concerns regarding it too. Because you know, when you get brackish water, a little bit of water that might come in the winter, that's a concern. But if something could be done or someone could explain to me the loss and if it's possible to get it back, that would be, that would be a really wonderful thing for our place. Thank you.
Hey, so Nancy, I know we've got still like probably six or seven more cards that are all around this issue. It might actually, since the email came out about the issue, could we call, maybe call an audible here and have one of the staff people just rehash and give us a quick update about what's actually happening with this pond before we hear the rest of the public testimony?
As far as our development staff, I think they're available.
Neither Brian or Ben are here, so.
So I'll stop the public testimony timer and we'll give Ben more than three minutes if he needs it.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. And for those in the audience that I've talked to over the past few weeks regarding this issue, I am Ben Gibson, Service Operations Manager for City of Springfield. Currently, what you're seeing with Duck Haven Pond through the Irving Slough is international paper. Their water that we receive through discharge in the summer months has been shut off. I'll back that up a little bit by saying that it was turned on about a week ago today. We're receiving about a million gallons of water per minute, per day, excuse me, through the Irving Slough. And one of the things that we're seeing right now is the fact that it had been dried for so long that we feel that the ground is just soaking up a lot of that water and it hasn't quite yet made it to Duck Haven. The purpose for them shutting that water off is because of construction that is related to the Mark Cola Meadows subdivision. If you're familiar with that subdivision, the Pierce ditch that runs from east to west through that subdivision has three crossings, three street crossings that go across it as well as some rehabilitation through that ditch. And it had to be dry for that process to take place. So once I got word through the developers and our development team to get that water back on, we did. I've been working with IP on this process. We've actually asked them if they could to ramp up that flow today. So it is currently running about one point five million gallons a day. And it's hard to tell when exactly that water might get back into Duck Haven, but we feel it may be when the rains come back this upcoming weekend into next week. Additionally, through this process, we've been talking with people about the fact that IP is going through some environmental upgrades to their plant. And after next year, so through the summer, which we believe is when construction might take place. And it'd be an assumption on my part if that's actually going to happen through the summer. But that's what we've been told is that they will have a one hundred percent reduction in their non-contact cooling water discharge and no longer be receiving those flows in the coming summers. Currently, we rely on international paper for that water discharge in the summer months. The other times of the year, it would be because the river levels from McKinsey are high as well as stormwater during the wet weather season.
All right, thanks for that update. Well, I'm sure we'll be coming back to you here in a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll keep going through this. Most of them are for this issue, so we're going to keep running through them. Judy DeForest.
Hi, Ben. I'm Judy. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I have been living on the slough since nineteen ninety-two. Our backyard is part of the slough as far as we have property on the other side. Since we've been there, we've had grebes, we've had ducks, we've had cranes, blue herons, egrets, greenback herons, kingfishers, migratory birds as well. So there is a migratory bird treaty act that a lot of this falls under. We've had bass, croppy, blue gill, there's little, the little mosquito eating guppies, carp this big, otters, salmon, bullfrog, deer, dragonflies of every color. And every, this is the fourth time completely wiped out, completely killed. This is not right. We bought this property with this in our backyard. It's beautiful. Right now, my backyard is destroyed. We have ivory nutria that has been living in that area that is in my fish ponds. They've dug under my shed and I'm not complaining. They have to have somewhere to go. There are a lot of people that bought houses in that neighborhood because of the slough. It's absolutely beautiful. Looking back at a contract that was between the city of Eugene as a steward for this area and Warehouser stating, if you look at the very back page, Oregon Division of State Lands and the city of Springfield, Oregon will make every reasonable effort to explore, study, or otherwise find alternative sources of fresh water for the Irving Slough wetland system during low flow or during the months when and if adequate flow is anticipated to no longer be available through the discharges from Warehouser. So I'm here tonight to ask what can we do to help these animals? I have pictures of deer standing in the dry bed looking for water and it's sad. I want to stay where I'm at. I love where I'm at. But part of where I'm at is because of my love for the animals and I've been fighting for them for thirty years. And I'm here to ask for help. Please. Thank you.
Lynn Nelson.
I'm going to add to that. I also live in this neighborhood. I'm on Thirty-second Street. Lynn Nelson.
Thank you.
Sorry. So I do not live on this slough, but there are people around the corner from me who do, and they're very upset. And every time I go outside, they keep talking about wanting to do something about it. They want me to send around a petition. I called today and I talked to Ben. And he was very clear that the, the arse is probably going to go away from what he said. And so if that's the truth, I'm feeling like we're not exploring what other options there are. I am not an engineer, so I can't tell you what to do. I made a suggestion that we could put a dam so that the water won't go into the neighboring neighborhood that is being built right now. Talked to Steve Mo about that. He said that the water, it would go underneath that and that's possible. But there've got to be other, other resources, you know, whether it's somebody else that's willing to donate water or if we can pump it from the Willamette River, if that gets too low, I don't know. But I'd like to find out what our other sources of water could be. Thank you very much.
Joanne Bass Allen.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Allen. I'm here to, and I live on the water in Ambleside on Thirty-third Street. I'm here to tell you about the water stoppage in the Irving Slough. In July, a project engineer from the massive Markola Road Construction Project asked the city of Springfield to stop the water flow from international paper. It needed three days to work on pipes. Our city manager, Ben Gibson, got the call. He called IP and IP shut off the water. Currently, IP diverts water into the slough from June through October until the rain begins. In the winter, when the McKenzie River gets high enough, there is a spillway where it goes into the slough. The water was shut off in early August. As the land dried up, the fish in many forms of water and plant life began to die. Heron, both great blue and snowy egret, were able to gobble frogs left without their homes. Ducks, deer, raccoons, nutria, possums, and river otter have been affected. Many have disappeared altogether. As the water decreased, more distressed wildlife from the new development has come to find water, but little is to be found. If this were going into your inbox, it would be marked urgent. Due to public outcry, IP turned on the water on October tenth. We have been told it is so dry that the main body of water in our wetland will not see any of the water before the yearly shut-off date of October thirty-first. A contract called a memorandum of understanding was made, which you all now have a copy of, between the city of Springfield, Oregon Division of State Lands and Warehouser, now IP in nineteen ninety-five. It states the city and state lands are responsible to find an alternative water source if the day came when IP should stop discharging water. What does all this mean? The argument by the city or state that it's okay for these wetlands to run dry is totally at odds with the recitals of this document. And indeed, the entire reason for this document suggests otherwise. Clearly, the city and state recognize the importance of water in the Irving Slough, or this MOU would not exist. The state and city agreed this day was a possibility and committed to prepare for it. Now, after nearly thirty years, IP has found another use for this water. So what reasonable efforts has the city made to find water? It appears to me that no one until recently has given it much thought. The city needs a commitment to work with IP to keep the water on longer than October thirty-first to get our levels back up to normal. Can you look into tax incentives or permit reductions to IP to give them incentive to save our wetland? Can you find a way to pump water from the McKenzie River to the wetland in the summer months? A precedent has been set by IP to pump three million gallons of water into the slough. Can you get them to continue this? Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Karlock.
Hi, my name is Linda. I'm going to approach it from my property taxes.
Could you say what part of the city you're from?
Springfield.
What area?
Twenty-two seventy-four Thirty-third Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
And it's about the slough. My property tax figures aren't important to you all. And honestly, they weren't to me either because my husband pays the bill for the house and the taxes are included. However, things have changed in my property landscape in just a short amount of time from June till now. You see twenty-five feet of my property I'm taxed for is held in environmental hands, which says you can look, but you can't touch. They don't want disruption to the protected slough and ditch that I border and pay high taxes for with visible water and in the McKenzie ditch in the Irving Slough. As for what is happening here this evening, I'm saying the slough and ditch are dried up. My property landscape has changed. All who border the Irving Slough and McKenzie ditch landscape changed with no notification. And it is ugly watching nature drying and scurrying about. This event was proposed for progress in the neighboring field across from Duck Haven. For my twenty-one years of living on Thirty-third Street, bordering the McKenzie ditch with water and the Irving Slough. And with the climate change, we all know goes on because that's how God made it. The Irving Slough and McKenzie ditch have never dried up like this. And it has been for a month. Will you use my property tax for tax dollar for water restoration to the Irving Slough? Or can I accept expected tax refund or lower tax amount on my property for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three? A lower property tax for all the folks who border the Irving Slough and McKenzie ditch would be a fair assessment. My tax increase over the past twenty years is two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. I accept increase and plan accordingly, but now I'm having a problem accepting an increase as I think it is unjust for the return our city has unsuccessfully fair traded. Not to go without saying, all the wildlife. Not to go without saying, all the wildlife have once again been displaced or killed. I'm upset and I feel really anguished over the haphazard consideration, the disregard for wildlife and existing property.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is Dwayne Reinick of, I apologize, Ranky.
I live at twenty-three eighty-seven thirty-second street. It's a dirty shame to see those poor ducks that have to, uh, wade through mud. And they can't hardly get through it. The dragon threw their old muddy and looked like hell. Um, and they're gonna be homeless pretty soon. And apparently, uh, I'm sure IP is, doesn't give a damn about it and, uh, I think there's, I've worked construction all my life and, uh, I've come across a lot of problems and they weren't, doesn't look as serious as some of the things I've worked on. And I think we could get together and see some way to either run a pipeline, uh, along without IP being involved or something through an environmental grant or something to this effect, that there's, there's an answer out there that's probably a lot more simple than we think. I think we just need to get together and sit down and have a workshop. And, uh, I would like to be on any workshop that you might, uh, propose. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris McAllister.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for, uh, having me here. My name is Chris McAllister. I live at nineteen oh nine twelfth street in Springfield. I wanted to give a quick update in regards to some questions council had asked earlier in the year that we had not been able to get to as carry it forward. I am currently the executive director as of last month and, uh, would like to just share that, uh, Council Woodrow had asked about how much our units cost to make. And whereas it was an easy, uh, number two years ago at six thousand or so, because of plywood and other costs with inflation and supply chain issues, um, that same unit is approximately nine thousand dollars. Whereas we have shower units that we've been able to make for six thousand, those are also nine thousand. Um, these are designs that were built to be able to bring more mobility and fluidity to, uh, our engagement with our own house folks. And so while I understand the trials and tribulations of those who are on the buck, the duck pond, I also know that our housing gap is needed. And so I hope that as we move forward and look into other projects that we consider these environmental issues as well. Part of the way that we will help the environment as well is by, by finding places for our people to be, safe places. We can make sure that we can control the environment to make sure the trash is dealt with in a humane way and be able to en- engage with people on a meaningful manner. When Springfield has a home for everybody, we are stronger. We, when we have people here who feel like they're part of the community and feel heard, they're your next taxpayers. They're the ones who will support your levies and help keep your prisons or jails, um, empty because we have things to fight for and we have things that we want to do. And so these have been trying years. We have been on a lot. We've been through a lot as a community with the fires, with COVID and with just the isolation. And so it's good to see this many people in these chambers. And it's good to be part of the solutions. And so I just want to say thank you as winter comes up um, for everything that y'all have done. I want to recognize the city manager's office with, uh, our city manager and our staff being able to, uh, deploy in the field to drop off things to make sure that our people are forgot, not forgotten. And to look for spaces as we go every year, trying to find a place when it's coldest. And so we've helped support our fire people by making our streets available temporarily. We've been able to help advance our car camping programs to make sure that more spots are usable. And this was done through the diligence and the dedication of our staff. So our voices as advocates and advocates, a- activists can only go so far. It takes a staff that can hear us and understand the nuances and trials and tribulations. So thank you to the council and thank you to the staff of Springfield.
Thank you, Chris. Jerry Allen.
Good evening. Um, Jerry Allen, I live at twenty-two seventy-eight thirty-third street. Tonight, as my, we had a neighbor who's, uh, she's very elderly. And she wanted to make sure that y'all saw this. This used to be what it looked like in her yard. And you, I've, I sent some pictures today. Did you guys all get those? Anyway, and kind of this was, some of this would have been close to her backyard because ours looks, anyway, like that too. So used to look like this. So, um, you know, today, um, okay. A lot of the things is kind of repetitious. There's been a lot of things, yeah, already said, but I'm just gonna kind of stick to my notes here because I don't know where I'll end up anyway. Um, I was surprised to see such a good out outcry tonight. So anyway, uh, so tonight I've come to speak about the serious problem that's developed by either neglect, oversight, incompetence, or lack of concern. And nobody willing to take charge and accept responsibility for the Irving slew wetlands. It seemed like it's just been we, my wife has talked to all kinds of people. You all see the list of the names. You probably have all been got, you got a call from her. I don't know. I mean, she's called everybody trying to find out what, why this is all going on. So uh, we need to take care of it. I don't know what, what the you know, cause where, where the problem's lying. But on May thirtieth nineteen ninety-five, um, Danny Brown, uh, representative of the city of Springfield signed a memorandum of understanding between then Warehouser Company and Oregon's Division of State Lands in which an item three states that Oregon Division State Lands and the city of Springfield, now we're addressing you folks tonight, uh, will make every reasonable effort to explore, study, and otherwise find alternative sources of fresh water. And you can see that's item three in this. Uh, I'm sure you guys all have a co- copied this, right? So I won't go over it. I'm gonna run out of time anyway. So, anyway, um, so when you consider the fact that Warehouser's no longer here and now we're dealing with, with international paper uh, regarding the water, and it's been more than twenty-seven years since the contract was signed. I, I must ask you, where are we now, really? Are we just gonna keep kicking the can down the road? I mean, I certainly hope not. It's really become serious as you all become made aware. And to finish up, I says, you know, some questions of what reasonable efforts have been taken to explore, study, and otherwise find the alternative sources of fresh water? Who has been assigned this task for the last seven, twenty-seven years? And more importantly, who is assigned to it now? Between cities of Springfield and the, and, you know, and what documents did the city produce regarding the findings regarding their commitments under item three? And what action does the city plan to take immediately to remedy the lack of water that they believe would imperil the habitat? You know, I hope the city is not planning to reneg on their commitment. And if so, where is the documentation, the reasons and, and why? I mean, it's a serious thing.
Your time's up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you so much. All right, Neil, do we have anybody online that wants to testify?
Mayor, it appears we do not have any hands up. Virtually.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Come back, Ben. Well, you know, uh, all right, so the water's on now, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. So when I read the memo and then I'll open it up to see if anybody's got other questions about it. The issue's not the water today. It's gonna, it's sort of filling back up. The issue is in the future IP's gonna stop um, pumping excess water because of their current, uh, DEQ permit. Is that accurate?
I think that, uh, the residents there now would say that it is a problem today because of where it.
Okay.
But, um, yes, the larger problem being in the future when we, uh, no longer have that in the summer months.
Okay. And that, and that's as early as twenty-three. It could be in twenty, in twenty-four. They may not be pumping water.
As I understand, uh, the construction project will be finished in sometime twenty-twenty-three. And whenever that is done, providing we've had our wet weather season return or the river levels rise, um, we, we would continue to have water. But if they finish that project beforehand, uh, not necessarily.
Okay. Does anybody have other, Glenn Leonard?
Yeah, um, I know that when the planning commission was considering the Marcola Meadows development, um, one of the commissioners expressed some concerns about the water table and the impact. Um, was there any, was there any consideration given to ways to mitigate the impact at that time?
Uh, Counselor Stare, we would have to get information for you on that, uh, from our development team or the, um, developers though.
All right. Um, do you know right offhand if there would be any way to uh, amend the DEQ that is causing IP to shut off on the, uh, the pumping of the water on October thirty-first?
I do not. I have talked with, uh, DEQ about, uh, this process that's happening. Uh, the people I talked to weren't necessarily aware of this project, um, but I'm sure somebody there is.
Okay, um.
Well, I, I, I just like, uh, if you could just follow up with us on that.
We can do that, Counselor Stare.
Thank you.
So could we do this? Um, I see a couple of things, um, for, for the folks in the room, you know, um, Ben and Brian are more than happy to meet with you and, you know, answer questions, uh, in the hall, in the hallway. I, I hear a lot of questions that you folks still, uh, that you folks still have and taking the opportunity to get a little bit of time with them and exchange cards so that we can, we can keep the conversation going. Um, I'm interested in a, in, in a couple of things. Could we get maybe an updated memo and once we talked to, once we talked to IP about what the, uh, you know, if, if their permit could be, you know, updated at all. I mean, I think that, that's a reasonable, um, that, that's a reasonable ask.
Yes, Mayor, no problem.
And then Mary Bridget, could you look at the, the nineteen ninety-five MOU and maybe add to that?
Will do.
Go ahead. And check with DSL to see where they can be involved as well.
I have had a meeting with DSL. Um, it has been about four or five months ago now regarding this situation. When I discussed this with them, uh, it was around the same time that I had first seen this MOU as well. I did not know it existed. And the, most of the people that, uh, are there, uh, they did not know it existed either. Those people, those employees are all since gone. So we will continue to have conversations with them as well as all of our internal staff as well.
Thank you. And, uh,
Go ahead.
And so possibly, um, may involve some state level elected folks to be able to help us with this situation. I mean, I, I sympathize with these folks and it's really hard to dream up water. If it's not there, it's not there. However, it, if it was there before, then that means it can potentially be there again from the same source, but it has to have the cooperation of, of the state agencies. And it's not a, a Springfield thing. It's, it's much bigger than that. So anything I can do to help it, great. But I think that, that, yeah. Sure, Brett. Sure, Brian.
Uh, there's a sad irony to this is that, uh, IP is working on their DEQ permit.
Right.
And so environmentally, they're doing a great thing, but environmentally there are consequences to the Irving slew. And I think the other piece to it is that the Irving slew water is actually pumped. I don't know if that's clear to property owners. We've had awesome conversations. Maybe they don't feel that they're awesome, but really good conversations and very respectful conversations with the constituency of the neighborhood. Uh, and we can provide more information. We can do more research and we will certainly do that. Uh, we were informed from DSL that, uh, there wasn't really, uh, an alternative for us for natural water to make it to the slew. And the current water is actually pumped
Right.
uh, by IP into it. And so they're gonna, with their process water changes, uh, they will discontinue that. So I don't know if that helps.
Right. It's a source. It's a source. It really boils down to, it's a source issue.
And as far as, uh, the statements made by the residents are accurate, you know, with, uh, um, effect and impact. This was a, a little early, but this is a window into what will likely happen over the next year or two.
Steve.
Property owner on the north side is a Blam Lane Park District now. I don't know if they have any experience they could help get into this.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, if you could really like meet with them and summarize what, and maybe recommend some, some next steps. I know this is a little like we're still getting, uh, we're still getting a lot of information from a, a lot of potential stakeholders. And I know that there's state lands involved, DEQ's involved, IP's involved. I know everybody's trying to do the right thing. Yep. Right. And understanding that this is an impact to the, to the environment of the city. Nancy, did you have anything?
Yes, I just, I feel compelled to add this. Um, you know, I'm really, uh, sensitive to the, uh, concerns of the homeowners and I, I think this council knows, uh, no secret that I'm an animal lover as well. Um, you know, this is one of those, um, situations where I want to make sure that we manage expectations because we are talking about water. Um, Oregon does have very strict requirements about if you're trying to divert water or otherwise interfere in a water pathway. Um, it, obviously I don't know the history. I wasn't here in the nineties. Um, you know, sometimes you have a a waterway that develops and it's not a naturally occurring waterway. So it doesn't have, it's a different type of dynamic. So, you know, I look at other areas where drought has severely impacted people's ability to to live and, and get actual well water. So this is, this is a, I believe, you know, a multiplicity of factors. Uh, climate change being one of them, you know, IP's discharge permitting being another. So, um, I think it would be, um, un- unrealistic to think that we would be able to pump water from, um, anywhere ever in, in Oregon to divert to a neighborhood slew as much as we may love the, how beautiful it is and for the, and for the wildlife. It's just, I want to be clear about that and, and kind of honest about what, what is possible and what isn't. Because even if we had all the political parties, you know, in line and willing, it's, it's a, we can't really control water. I wish we could produce more.
Actually, thank you for that, for that call out because it, that is accurate. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, even water rights are sold out. So I mean, you can't just all of a sudden start pumping things out of our rivers. So it's very complex. And, and again, it, it it's, it's a rough deal, but I don't see an easy fix.
Oregon's constitution is, is, uh, water rights the pup to the state. Uh, I think navigable waters and, uh, it's smaller than, and I don't know what this means.
Yeah.
To have a bill to, or Mackenzie.
All right, Leonard.
So if, um, the, if this is a, uh, a state level issue, what we should probably do, uh, at, at the city level is talk to our state legislators? I mean, would that be, would that be the next step?
I, I think the challenge is gonna be at the end of the, like, at the end of the day, right? Like, we're, IP's the one that's fill- filling it in the, in the uh, dry months from essentially industrial, you, you know, supplied water. And that there's not, the state is not gonna let us divert three million gallons out of the Mackenzie River in the dry season to fill, fill this. So maybe, but I think letting these folks do a little bit of digging and a little bit of research about what, what the potential option is. But I think for the, for the folks from the, from, from the community, just understanding that this is a, a really high hurdle and I let them work on it, let them dig on it a little bit, um, and find out some more information. All right. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Is, uh, we will continue to be transparent with our conversations with, uh, IP and we have been and we will continue to be. So.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, sometimes they look like the villain and they've been very good with communicating with us. So.
And the root cause of their envi- like them doing the environmental upgrade is to use less water, right? Okay.
Exactly.
So for, for the folks in the, in the room, um, like the staff is gonna meet you in the hall and that'll give you a chance to then to answer some more Q and A from you if you're interested. Um, they're gonna get us some more information and then we'll have to take it from there. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thanks to everyone who testified tonight.
All right. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is ordinances. We have one ordinance tonight, an ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code, section five point one, three, four regarding bicycle operation and storage within city hall. And this is ordinance number four, an ordinance amending the Springfield Municipal Code, section five point three, four, and adopting a severability clause. Mary Bridget Smith is here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight for a minor, um, proposed edit to our municipal code. It's to allow for city employees to transport and store their bikes above, uh, the bottom of city hall uh, in an effort to encourage commuting, um, by bike. And also to keep bikes safe when they're stored underneath city hall. They tend to get stolen or vandalized. So still would prohibit, um, bicycles or skateboards or those kinds of items being ridden here through the top of city hall or in the steps, but just a little more flexibility for, um, employees and staff members to store bikes while they're here. First reading tonight, no, uh, public hearing and no action.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Uh, Joe.
How many have been stolen?
Uh, you know that? I don't know. I can find out.
That'd be good info.
Nancy.
I'm, 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 we, we can get that information from you, councillor Pictionary. But I, I, I wanted to bring, I asked for this change in city hall for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's important to promote the wellness of our employees. Two, anything we can do to reduce carbon emissions is all to the good. It didn't make sense to me that we couldn't bring bikes up, especially I'm, I am somebody who likes cycling and I know it's a very expensive investment. With the advent of electric bikes, it's very possible to spend thousands of dollars on a bike and I wouldn't certainly feel comfortable leaving it in kind of a caged area downstairs. So really, I, I was really looking at this most, mostly as a wellness and also just a, a preventative measure for our employees. I think it's been well received. It's one of those small things that we can do to help promote wellness in our employees. And I think electric bikes have enabled more people to enjoy commuting by bike that may not have been able to physically do that in the past. So I hope that more people be reading my bike.
And that, and that's great. But if you're coming at it at me with saying we're gonna do is try to reduce the crime and having bikes not stolen as opposed to what you just said, I'm more convinced with what you just said.
That was the reason that I asked for it to begin with. And I, no, for the wellness factor.
That's what I'm saying.
It seemed like for me an easy thing that we could do for our employees to show that we value their overall health.
No, and I get it. I don't, I, I support that. I just I don't know. I guess I'm making my
I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
Yeah, I'm just saying this, the approach.
Okay, any other questions? I have, I have one clarification. So the, the resolution refers to designated area. Like, is that just back in the offices or is, okay. So that's just something that you said administratively?
That, yes, Mayor. We already have an administrative policy around this that we've enacted. The, the policy requires that employees put their bike in a work area, not in a public area, that it does not impede the public access within city hall, nor does it block a safety ax, access or fire door. Employees also recognize that they are responsible for the safekeeping of their bicycle or any valuables there too. And that the city has no liability for any bicycles in, within city hall.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right. Oh, I don't even think it's for a public hearing. All right, no action needed. It is the first reading. Next item, please.
Next item is any business from the city council.
Councillor Rodley.
I always come with a list. First, everybody's left, but I just wanted to thank everyone for coming down and sharing their concerns and being in person. And I just, I just appreciate folks taking the time to do that. Secondly, tomorrow, October eighteenth is the last date of register to vote or to update. So if anybody's listening and hasn't, please do so that you can vote. And then the other thing, I, I'm feeling it in a joyful way and I hope other people are starting to notice that things are opening up and we're having events and we're gonna have Halloween at city hall and there's been more things to do. And I just want to encourage folks to get out and do things. I want to just encourage people to, you know, support local businesses. Try the new restaurants that are opening. You know, there's a new little bakery down at the antique store on, and so just get out, do things, come to things, come to the, whatever the mayor's thing. Just come and do the things because it feels so great to be out doing things in person. And I just want to encourage folks to do that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? For the record, it is the mayor's review and I, and I want to reassure councillor Rodley, I am not singing, dancing or doing stand-up.
The mayor's thing. Thanks.
Okay, I got a couple of, of quick items and I'm, I'm looking over at AJ so she can get me the right date when I get down to the added meeting here in a minute. October twenty-fourth, we will I believe, Joe, you are hunting that week. Yeah, so we probably likely are gonna be down to four folks and I'm just asking everybody to triple check their calendar to ensure that because we need everybody that night for us to have a meeting. If, does anybody have any other conflicts that I don't know about? And you don't have to tell me the, the details. I just want to make sure we have enough folks here to do business. Okay. Done. AJ, can you, what's the date for that, for the, is it like December twelfth? For that, so we had a request last week at, at at agenda review to add an additional meeting in December specifically to get the judges and city who is it, judges and city attorney? City attorney evaluations done. Likely that would be December twelfth. We could do it in person. We can do it remote. But like, from a, from a scheduling perspective, we have a lot of new councillors showing up in January. We want to try to get this all done because the new folks have not necessarily you know, been here to, to review everybody's performance. Does anybody have an issue, question, concern about adding a meeting the twelfth? And it's gonna be a single item like Nancy's promised not to find another item for us to process. So it would come in, it would probably be an executive session for the entire, entire time. We're not taking off. We're just getting an extra, it's an extra bonus meeting. All right, so we are good there. We're not in a good I'm, I'm not having you sit next to your union representative anymore. All right. Uh, Friday, we're expecting the, the mayor's review is Friday. So for councillors that have not decided to come, that is the that is the event to support the Emerald Arts Center and the Rotary Charitable Foundation to do good things throughout, throughout the city. So please get your tickets or AJ is going to bug you to make sure that you have tickets and show up on Friday. I think that is all I had. All right, anybody else going once? Next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
No further business this evening. Thank you.
And business from the city attorney?
Uh, no business.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Go Vols.